All right, so welcome to the May session of the Village of Southampton Planning Commission. Welcome, everybody. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So, "Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all." Okay, so we're now going to do a roll call. So, Michelle Brogga.
I'm here.
Christian Picot.
Present.
Okay. Michael Anderson.
Present.
Jean Rootless.
Yes.
Catherine Blackmore.
Present.
And myself, Mark Schiffer. So, everybody is here tonight, so we have a quorum. I'd like to make a motion first to just quickly approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Our second. Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, approved. So, we have here, we're going to follow our agenda tonight. Just the first item on the agenda, I just, we had a lot of personnel changes and new people who joined the village in the last month and a half, and I just want to go through it quickly. So, we had Anthony Piazza, who was appointed to the Tree Commission when John Nekness resigned. And we have Peter Grillish, whose term was extended also on the Tree Commission. We have Brennan Rack, who was recently hired as a maintenance mechanic with the Department of Public Works. John Skanga, who was appointed as a police officer for the Village of Southampton. We have a new treasurer, Julie Crudup, who was recently hired as the new treasurer. We have Victoria Elenowitz, who was appointed to the Environmental and Sustainability Committee. We have Cameron Pace, who was hired to the position of deputy village clerk. We have Janet Gant, who was working, who has now been moved to the Public Works Department. Daniel Sanchez, who was hired as a seasonal police officer. We have Kelly Crack to the position of deputy village treasurer. So, we have a lot of people in that, new people in that department. Shannon O'Donnell was moved to the office of the village clerk. William Dye was appointed to the village board, and he replaced Willa Bernstein, who resigned. We have Gary Pye, who has a new position with the Assistant to the Building Inspector. We now, Chris Talbot, who came back to the village. So, now we have Gary, Gary. And we have Guadalupe Vargas, who is also was as a student intern in the tax receivers office. So, it's a lot of personnel change in the village, and it's a new season.
Mark, if I may, as liaison for the Planning Commission to the Tree Commission, I just would like to thank John Nekness for his work that he did for us, and welcome Anthony Piazza to the Tree Commission. He brings a wealth of knowledge. We had our first meeting with him last month, and he seems to be a great replacement for John, and I'm looking forward to working with him.
All right, thank you. Great. Appreciate that. So, it's a new team. It's going to be a lot of training to be done, but I think it's, all this is very positive. New blood in the village. The next item that we have on the agenda, we just would like to have a quick update on the improvement of the cell service in the village. Christian, would you like to talk about this?
Sure. So, we have an RFP committee that was formed, which included village planner Alex Wallach, village administrator Anthony Carter, as well as Second Fire Chief Ricky Fowler, and two Planning Commission members, Michelle Brogga and myself. We received four bids. We analyzed them, reviewed them. We have more questions, which Alex Wallach has sent to them with a short deadline. And we should be in a position, certainly before the end of the month, to award a winner to the bids that we put out. I will say that we're thankful that there was a lot of interest from tower operators for our project in the Southampton Village to help reception for our first responders, fire, police, and our ambulance. It's important to have very good reception for our first responders. And the solution we will find, along with the tower operator working on a deficiency study and coming up with solutions, will also benefit to a great extent our residents, particularly those who are using T-Mobile or AT&amp;T. And we'll start to work in June with the awarded tower operator. And we should start to have some real concrete information in terms of what the plan is. I would suspect by the middle of the summer, and inform the village residents as to what we'll be doing to improve both our first responder service as well as our village resident cell service.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. As along the same line, I'd like just to mention that the town has just awarded two contracts to build two cell towers, one in Hampton Bay on Beach Road and the other one on the North Sea Transfer Station. Those contracts were awarded to Tower Point. And so, they were, both contracts were signed. They are now into the permitting phase. So, hopefully, the permitting will be also pretty expeditious since there had been public hearings before, and it seems to be that in both areas, both in Hampton Bay and in North Sea Road, the public was very much in favor to improve the cell service in those areas. So, hopefully, we'll have some improvements there also. In the case of those two cell towers, the town of Southampton is receiving 50% of the lease, 50% of the lease income generated from those towers. And on top of it, Tower Point is also contributing some capital improvements initial for those two sites, in approximately like close to almost $400,000. So, that's a good move to improve the cell service in this area. Any other comments on this?
That information, and I can assure you that these are good numbers, and we'll be in a close to similar situation in some of the bids we look at.
Okay, fantastic, yeah. Yeah, that was a great, I think the town did a great deal there, a great job on negotiating those contracts. The next item that we have on the agenda here is about the possible creation of a bid, a business improvement district for the village business district. So, I think Jean met with Eldon Scott.
Yes, Eldon and I met a couple of times over the last month, and we've had some good discussions. We have a draft of an outline for a short, medium, and long-term plan on various components, on how to address, you know, the business district. So, we should hopefully be able to share that shortly. But we're excited, and we think that it's a good opportunity to revisit a couple of quality of life issues.
Yes, and I think, and the idea of the thought of creating a bid, a business improvement district, which is a New York State-defined term, that it allows the bid to then require everybody to join, and then not tax them, but impose a fee.
So, yeah, Eldon's very experienced in sort of these structures, and we're looking at whether the bid itself is the right structure or whether there's something else. But I think before we even come to the structure, you know, answer, it's really getting the right people around the table to figure out what we want to do, how long it's going to take, and really try to, you know, get it moving.
Right. I mean, there's a lot of activity in the village, especially like around Wilming Lane, Hill Street,
Right.
where there's a lot of, the center of the village is sort of moving. This way, there was a, we repaired the parking lot area, so, you know, a lot of improvement can still be done to the village in terms of coordinating all the activities.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
Jeanine, can I ask, is it the intent to include the Chamber of Commerce and a plate of business owners?
Yes.
To golf with?
Yes, we actually made a list of business owners that we think would be good. In fact, the Shippey's owner is always, is in the press recently a lot, so we thought he would be a good person also. But yes, and if we have, if you guys have ideas, we should, the idea was we would present the plan, obviously, to the commission, and then get input, and then revise it accordingly.
Yeah, I think that the plan would be to create with, between Jean and Eldon, and then you could create a task force.
That's exactly what, yeah. We have a bunch of names.
Create a task force with all the business owners within the village business district, who would then come up with a plan, and then it would be done under the supervision of the agid of the Planning Commission. Right.
So, Jeanie, if I could ask, I think trustee Stevenson is obviously interested in following this.
Okay.
He's a business owner. And that's the liaison role that he has with what you're working on. I spoke with him not too long ago, and his message was, what would be right is if we can have shoulder seasons of the earlier months and the later months extended, and really focused on. We know it's going to be a real challenge in the deep winter, but if we could have a shoulder season that is longer and deeper and more animated, that would be wonderful for the, for the, for the business owners. And that was his message to you to think about.
Okay. Yeah, and I think you had mentioned that in an email, so we definitely brought that up.
Okay, very good.
That's great. Thank you for that.
Okay. Any other comments? You don't see, well, one, also one thought was to try to make the village a little greener, and maybe have a packaging that's a little bit less plastics, that's, you know, things like, makes the village more sustainable. And be a leader in that, in this. The next item that I have here on the, on the agenda, I had as item 4.3, I thought it would be interesting to discuss the role of the Planning Commission and the involvement of the Planning Commission in proposed new regulation initiatives by the village. I added this to the agenda. I have myself been on the Planning Commission for, I think, maybe over 15 years. And the role of the Planning Commission has evolved depending on the various administrations. And I remember the, for example, the Epple administration, every regulations, every proposal, every initiative would be going, would be discussed at a Planning Commission meeting, and then brought to the Board of Trustees, who would then hold the formal public hearings and enact the regulations or the new initiatives. And in the last, and this was very similar also under the Irving administration. And then it seems like the role of the Planning Commission has sort of phased out a little bit under the Warren administration. And in this new administration, I would like to maybe ask as all members of the Planning Commission in concert to maybe make, send a signal to the Board of Trustees that maybe they wish we should go back to the, to trying to have all those new initiatives and rules and regulations be vetted, be reviewed by the Planning Commission, and not only hold the, only the strict minimum required public hearings for those, for these initiatives and regulations. Because this is what's really been happening. And I think that from even the island that recently was built on, along Hill Street, where maybe they could have painted it on the road first before building the island, or even on the sewer commission that has been going on, lingering for such a long time with no real, no real concrete results. And now we just received, the villagers received a million dollar in a grant for the sewer. I think that these types of initiatives should go through the Planning Commission. Under the Epple administration, I remember that in two years, when the Epple administration were looking to put together a sewer for the village business district, it went through the Planning Commission, and within two years, we had a plan, we had a budget, we had for a smaller sewage plant. And it was absolutely, I think that not to use the resources in the Planning Commission, I don't think it's the, also serves the public properly. Because we are a very transparent board. We are a very transparent commission. We welcome everybody else to come and participate in the debate. Participate, give us ideas, suggestions, and it's important. And I think this is what, you know, in the Village of Southampton, we have residents that are very smart, very involved, very sophisticated, and could also lend a hand and help in the development of our village. So, I think that, you know, I would like to have opened the discussion here and understand that, you know, see that maybe we could make together, prepare a memo and suggest that maybe the Board of Trustees revisit their, the way they are proposing or the new initiatives. Any comments?
No, I'll make a comment, Mark. What I would suggest, and I would think that what you're speaking of with the Epple administration and Irving administration, the current administration was not on their board or really have any experience with them and how they ran the Planning Commission, or what they went through and the help needed by the Planning Commission. I think maybe if you suggest to, if you, if you want to write a letter, and I don't, I don't see any negativity about writing a letter, maybe suggesting to them how it used to be and how you feel as though we're not being utilized as much as we once were. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Waiting for their response, it would be nice to hear from them and see what their response might be.
Right, because I think that we provide a better forum, if I can say that, to then the Board of Trustees when it comes to discussion, discussing new initiatives. Where in fact, when, when the Board of Trustees presents, it's sort of already written. It's already, they just want to have public comments, and it's already set. Whereas when, when the discussion was held at the Planning Commission, at that point, it was still fluid. We could, you know.
And the public had some prior knowledge through the Planning Commission of what they got.
Exactly.
What the trustees were thinking.
Right, exactly, exactly. And so, I think that it's, I would like sort of to go back to the old way of, you know, whereby things are more filtered or there's more involvement of the Planning Commission. Any thoughts, Michelle or Christian?
Sure. So, look, if you compare and contrast previous times to today, I'll make a few observations. There's no one in the room right now in the public, nor is there today, nor is there frequent visits to listen in. If I look at the YouTube count, our last meeting, we had 25 count of people, and I'm sure two or three or four of them were from existing Planning Commission members and not village residents. So, and I don't ever see Southampton Press taking any interest in listening to any of these Planning Commission meetings or reporting on any of it, which I find unfortunate. So, you know, the idea of having the Planning Commission to be a forum for the public to come and discuss issues. We had very good discussions last time on the community aggregation. Came up with a lot of new information on that. And I'm sorry to say that I don't think many, well, certainly I know, not more than a dozen village residents listen to any of this, which is really unfortunate. So, there's an issue to think about as to why isn't the public listening to the Planning Commission? And to say that nothing is done on the Planning Commission, I think is wrong. And everybody around here on this commission should be proud of its achievement in the last few years, the number of things that we have accomplished. And don't need to recite it, but certainly whether it's Tree City, whether it's leaf blower legislation, whether it's gear management, whether it's a city review, whether it was compensation for trustees, electoral process, we've done a lot of stuff. But the public is not coming to it. Number two, difference between previous administration and the Warren administration, current administration, in terms of how the Board of Trustees have been organized, is that they now have, which didn't exist before, a work session and a regular session every month. And it is during the work session that these kinds of things can be presented. And where there is public audience during this work session, or at least the opportunity for the public to come and listen to these work sessions. So, the question is, do you use the Planning Commission as a forum? Or do you use the work session of the Board of Trustees as a forum? And I think there's probably a good mix. I wouldn't necessarily try to bring everything to the Planning Commission. I think these work sessions are there for it. Some of the points you raised are interesting ones in terms of informing the public. Certainly, the newsletters shouldn't be necessarily a promotion for a trustee for what he or she has done, but really a vehicle of communication of some new things that are done in a better effort. There, certainly, the Planning Commission could make the recommendation to use these kinds of vehicles.
Right.
You could also say that digital media. Village Southampton has its own channel on Instagram. It should be sure that this is not used as a political platform but rather an information vehicle for people who like to communicate through digital media. And so, there's some intent, but I think we could get better at that. So, those are my views, and I thought I'd share.
Yeah.
And so, be more holistic in terms of what you're trying to achieve, Mark.
Yeah, I think that you brought up some very good points. I mean, I remember that at every meeting on the Planning Commission before the Warren administration, the Southampton Press was here to be part of the discussion because it was a preview of every regulations, from the leaf blower to the zoning changes, to setbacks regulations, to, you know, it was a preview, was going through the Planning Commission. And after that, then subsequent, it became sort of, the discussions were no longer taking place in the Planning Commission. They were taking place in front of the Board of Trustees. You know, for example, even the, more recently, the solar farm that's being proposed on Cooper's Farm, the solar panels, this is, we're alienating park land. This is definitely a planning issue, and it's something that should be discussed here in the Planning Commission. And I don't see why it's not. I don't. See, the also, the, what has happened is that under the Warren administration, instead of going through the Planning Commission, the mayor at that time decided to create like subcommittees that were independent. The Sustainability Committee, the Climate Action Committee. And these committees are working on their own in, to me, in complete disregard of the sunshine laws, you know, that, of the open meeting laws. And there are things that are being discussed and proposed to the Board of Trustees without real public involvement. Where in fact, all these items should be done through the Planning Commission. You know what I'm saying? So, so maybe I'll start a little draft, and I'll run the draft through everybody here, and everybody can have their input. But I think it's, it would be nice for, to ask, you know, that's why we were created, the Planning Commission was created, to review referrals from the Board of Trustees, but the Board of Trustees is no longer referring items to us. So, that's.
No, an opening statement to whatever you're drafting, I certainly would use Section 20-3, which talks about the Planning Commission's power and duties and outlines a number of things, including making recommendations to the board with respect to proposed amendments to the village code, including zoning code, specifically Chapter 116.
Right.
So, that one understands clearly what's the intent of the Planning Commission when it was founded in 20, in 2000, 20 years ago.
Right, totally, yes, exactly. Okay, any further? No? Okay. Michelle, would you like to add something?
No, I agree with Christian. I'm reading, as we speak, Section 23, which is very clear. It says that the Planning Commission is making recommendations to the Board of Trustees with respect to implementing the comprehensive plan. B, making recommendations to the Board of Trustees with respect to achieving the goals and objectives identified in the comprehensive plan. C, as Christian just read, making recommendations to the Board of Trustees with respect to proposed amendments to the village code. D, making recommendations to the Board of Trustees with respect to matters referred to the Planning Commission by the Board of Trustees. And lastly, E, conducting studies and holding public hearings with respect to matters identified in the comprehensive plan, matters relating to the comprehensive plan and other matters relating to its powers and duties. This is exactly what the commission was created to do.
Exactly.
In 2000, yeah.
Yes, so let's, I think this was.
Maybe we should just have a discussion with the, with the Board of Trustees and hear their thoughts on the subject.
Exactly, because I think it was, the purpose is a very good and valid good purpose for, that serves well the residents of Southampton as a.
And it could be something as simple as what Michael said, is that they didn't know how it was done before, so they may be totally open to this.
Okay, very good. Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, so that's, I'll start the draft and circulate it. The next item that we have on the agenda was a little bit about some town initiatives that may impact the village. There is the Liberty Garden Development, which has been put on hold for 45 days, I understand. So, we should keep our eyes on it. This is the, an affordable housing development on County Road 39 that was designed for, mostly for veterans. And there was an issue whether, how much this development will service our area and how much, so it's still in the approval process for a zoning change in front of the town board. A small section of that property is in village property, and it has a direct impact on the village. The next item was on the Community Housing Fund updates. I will be making a presentation to the Board of Trustees on that. There is one application that was presented very close to the village to, for a housing development just east of the Audi dealer in front of the old Princess Diner. This, they just got an extension on that proposals. So, this would also be providing affordable housing very close to the village. The next item that we have here is on gear management, but then there's nothing to really.
When are you presenting to the Board of Trustees your report on Community Housing Fund?
Yes, when?
When?
I believe it's on the 20, in the 23rd. I think it's on the twenty-third. I'll check the agenda, it's either on the ninth or the twenty-third. I think the ninth, they had a pretty big agenda, so it's going to be either the ninth or the following meeting. The next item that we have here on the agenda is about the deer management, but I don't think there's anything to report there.
No, no update on that.
No update on that. All right. Is Alex with us?
Wait, Alex, if you, Mark, if you allow me, there's one item I think is interesting and Michael Anderson might want to go there, or other planning commission member might attend at the town, which is on May twentieth at nine thirty, where the town trustees will be discussing the land swap. It's a work session, it's not a public hearing, but land swap between those two park and the newly purchased lot by the Community Preservation Fund, where this water treatment plant facility will be installed. And what's interesting that I've learned is that in fact, to do this reportedly, and be curious to get some more information, one has to go through a referendum vote, which means that this parkland swap can't happen without a referendum and that won't take place before November, which I found really interesting. Does our town near zone know anything about that?
No, I don't. Christian.
Good.
So we'll look into it.
So it's twenty eighth of May at nine thirty, and I think it's really relevant information for our village residents. And again, when you talked about informing our residents and what's going on, I thought that was an interesting thing that a village residents should go to town on the twentieth of May, nine thirty, listen to this work session and what's going on.
All right, thank you so much for bringing this up, bringing this up, I think we should attend. Another small item that the town is doing, we had recently joined the town or signed a intermunicipal agreement for when it comes to filing complaints against contractors, whereby any contractor within the village of Southampton, if you had to file a complaint, that complaint would be filed with the licensing review board for the town of Southampton, before all the complaint had to go to the county. And the town is now changing, they're actually merging the licensing review board or actually, there's another, it's called the Public Safety Commission, and they are now going to assign the complaints against contractors to this Public Safety Commission instead of the Licensing Review Board. If anybody's interested in participating, there will be a public hearing at the town, I believe on the fourteenth, on this subject. Okay, the next item that I have on the agenda is for Alex to maybe brief us a little bit.
I'll intervene again if I may before I jump to Alex on another item. We had in the past penalties and offenses and we haven't drawn their clothes and I'd like to, and Michelle is the chair of this, but I think it's, it's a point where we can't just no longer have it on the agenda, we need to bring it to a close, make the recommendation, either in writing or a presentation to the trustees, it's really not wrong, but I think we need to sort of bring a closure to this item. Michelle, if you want to, you know, sort of summarize the conclusions, or I'm happy to do it, and have the commission sort of say, yeah, that's what we want to do, I think it'd be useful to just bring this thing to a close and just move on. I mean, I think we have short-term recommendation, long-term recommendation.
Well, I spoke about this a couple of times before.
You did.
At the project commission, but I'm happy to put it on paper and make a formal recommendation to the board of trustees in the next few days. Yes.
Don't you want, I mean, we should have other members of the planning commission sort of understand what these are and say, yeah, that's what we want as a commission, as opposed to simply a task force, as a commission, thanks to the task force, that this is the commission's view.
Right.
I'm not sure that Michael Anderson or Genius Gulas or even Chair know exactly what we're going to recommend as a task force.
Right, I think that, yeah, that task force was, did a, I think a tremendous job under the, with, under the coordination of Michelle, and they were like very dedicated people, including the town attorney, who participated in this, and we now have a new judge, and one of the big issues is that there was, until recently or until now, the fines on village violations were de minimis. There was very little fine, there was never, so now we have a new judge, we have a new enforcement officers, we have a new regulations, so we want to try to make sure that what regulations are being enacted, you know, there is some meat to it and then there is some violations can be, okay, so, Michelle, I'll put it back on the next.
Very circulated plans.
Go ahead. So Michelle, Michelle, you'll circulate a proposal and we'll discuss it at the next meeting then.
Well, look guys, this is a month from now, we've been at it now for eighteen months. I mean, the recommendation is fairly simple. One, the article two of section one, which has two thousand as an amount, should be increased to a higher level, that's recommendation one. Number two, we had discussed bracketing some of the offenses to come up with an amount, there was a lot of debate on that. One, because it's going to be very difficult in the code, needs a lot of weak ass thing in organization to do this, and the other item was really the challenge to tell a prosecutor what the amount should be for every fine to bracket this. There was a lot of issues in terms of framing this process and a lot of pushback. I think at the end of the day, what we heard is that you got a new judge, but if the prosecutor is not coming up with the appropriate number in terms of penalties and not making it meaningful and these offenses keep coming back, well, maybe you need a change there as well. So, you know, these are the key issues and at the end of the day, you know, we should make these recommendations quickly and just finish it and be done with it, and it's not necessarily a paper, we could just speak to the board of trustees at one of the sessions and just get it out of the way, certainly should be done before the end of June.
Okay, so.
Well, we can do that quickly, but for the benefit of the twenty people who are going to watch this recording, in terms of fine and offenses, they're really two quite separate subjects. One is the one that are parking tickets and traffic violation, et cetera, which are handled by our police force, and the fines there were recently increased, for example, parking, I think from fifty to seventy-five, et cetera, seventy-five dollars. That aspect brings in about half a million dollar of revenues to the village per year and that's about a hundred percent of the revenues from fine and offenses. And that's not really a difficult subject, I think it's well handled and the judge, the new judge is upholding the proposed fines, it's working fine. The real issue is the enforcement of the fine and offenses for violations of the building codes, and that's more complicated, and that's where the two thousand cap comes into play, whereas frankly, there has never been a two thousand dollar fine imposed and paid for violation by a contractor or somebody who does not abide by the building code. It's a part of enforcement rather than the number. And as Mark mentioned, there's a brand new team of people from building department head to code enforcement, to the judge, and the recommendation, after long discussions, will be to focus on enforcement and making sure that there are some good examples of enforcement to make sure that the contractors and the builders understand that there are consequences. So that's the recommendation on that aspect.
Right.
Anything you want to add to that?
Well, let me ask you this, I mean, I thought there was a will, at the end of the discussion, whilst we never had a two thousand or near two thousand fine imposed, to increase the number and to send a signal that the village is serious about dealing with the issue, and it's really send a signal in terms of what the prosecutor is intended to do, which is the interest of the village, and just send a signal by having a public hearing, moving that number from two thousand to a higher number and put the discussion before the, sort of, the summer season to put that on. It's a really simple code change, but it really forces this discussion around to say, look, we've spent more money on code enforcement, we've hired new people, we're serious about it, we have better structure in terms of the court system and judicial system, and we really mean it and we want to increase that number from two thousand to a higher number. I thought that was one of the recommendations, but you didn't say that. Is it not, I mean, are we not thinking this would be a good thing to do?
Raising the number is a possibility and forcing it is more important. For example, if somebody builds a gates that's not dubbed to code, do you fine two thousand dollars or do you have the code enforcer go every day that is not corrected and fine two thousand dollars every single day it's not corrected? That's efficient. Bringing it to twenty thousand dollars, because in the context of a ten million dollar home in the estate section, people are very much willing to pay a two thousand dollar fine or even a twenty thousand fine, right? So, the problem we have analyzed in great detail is a problem of enforcement and willingness to actually have teeth in the enforcement of existing rules. True, we could increase that two thousand to a higher number, but if it's not enforced, it's almost irrelevant, and that's been the case for a long time.
So I'd like to give, I'd like to give an opportunity for Michelle to maybe summarize and maybe at the next meeting to present it, a letter that we would then present to the board of trustees for action. Okay.
I'll circulate, I'll circulate something in the next few days to the planning commission members to make sure we're aligned.
All right, thank you so much, thank you so much. So I just would like now to go back to the agenda on, and leave the floor to Alex. If maybe you could just briefly, Alex, tell us a little bit about the recently enacted zoning changes?
Sure, so recently the board of trustees adopted a series of vote change to the building boards and implement some recommendations that were outlining comprehensive plan, those were with respect to setbacks, particularly side yard setbacks, there's a new table in the code that adopts many of the recommendations that are in the comprehensive plan. There were also some minor changes to how the village calculates gross floor area with GFA, and that's what regulates the size of buildings. So there were some changes as to how attached garages get counted towards that requirement. There was also some change in the way that double height areas get counted, they had a clarification on that into the code, and they introduced what was a recommendation of a comp plan for the green space requirement, which requires a minimum percentage of eventual lots to be used for green space or permeable landscaping. That was a new requirement, and it was based on a study that was done by the company. So all those changes were adopted by the board of trustees. They grandfathered certain applications that were already pending or in the process of being approved, but going forward, the building department will be implementing those requirements as we get new applications.
Right. Yeah, thank you. So there were, you know, important changes, especially when it comes to setbacks and setbacks on smaller lots, that was actually, they were reduced, they will reduce the setback requirements on smaller lots. Yeah, to allow, okay. And the next item that I have here is if you have any suggestions that you, Alex, you've been here for now, what, how many years, three years now? Or four?
Not, not three, not three years.
Not three?
Over two years.
Over two years, over two years. So if you have any suggestions to make on how to improve the land use approval process or, you know, we would certainly welcome to hear them and, you know, we'd be the right place to, for you to present them, you know, I think that there's a lot still improvements to be done. I don't know if you want to discuss it or if you have any ideas right now?
Well, we've been working to implement a lot of different changes. We've updated the way that we handle demolition permits, we've created a new streamlined approach for how we handle signed permits, and we're working on better coordination with the board chairs for the land use board chairs, who are having regular meetings with the elected officials to discuss how they're processing the applications. So hopefully as we come further staff in the building department, we're going to continue to implement those improvements.
Right, so now, well now you have a new building inspector, you have a new assistant to the building inspector, so also a lot of personnel change at that level. All right, thank you, Alex. The next items that I have on the agenda, I think we're going to, we'll wrap up relatively quickly, was one was an initiative to improve the government transparency, there was a discussion to buy another module on Civic Plus that would allow the public to look at the building permit applications, I think that this is something that maybe the planning commission should, should review a little bit further. On a more practical point, I just wanted to take this opportunity to also bring to the public that there is, the village has issued an RFP for the roof replacement for the Southampton Veterans Hall, as well as the Southampton Art Center that the village owns, and that the proposals are due on April fifth. And the last, the, before last item on the agenda, we have is the elections that are coming up, time flies, we are ready in May, and our village elections are to be held on June twenty-first. The last day to submit candidacy is May seventeen. The only candidates that have officially been, right now that we have are Gina Resta and Len Zenati that are running to, for their trustee seat, as well as Linda Riley for her judge seat. And so anybody who wants to present themselves, they have until May seventeenth, the first day to present is on May tenth and then May seventeenth. So we'll.
I mean, if we're going to talk about this, which I'm not sure is the role of the planning commission, but there are other people who have filed petitions, who are in the process of filing petitions.
Right, but they have not, they can only actually submit their candidacy on May tenth. So the people have indicated that they may or may not present themselves, but it's not official. This is only as of May tenth that they can officially present themselves and to be put on the ballot. So there's a window of one week where people can then place themselves on the ballot if they meet the requirements. We have here a sheet from, that was repaired by the village clerk regarding the public notice for the elections, and I invite everybody, this was circulated, so right now, the only one that we know for sure are, that are running are the current incumbents, Gina Resta and Len Zenati, as well as the judge Linda Riley. So we don't, the other people are not officially on the ballot. Any public comments or discussions? No, all right, so, just then I'll make a motion to adjourn and schedule our next meeting and I'll see everybody on June sixth.
Second.
Second, everybody in favor? Hi, everybody, thank you so much for joining us. Hi, everybody, thank you so much for joining us.